We'll call this special meeting of the county commissioners to order. The reason we're here today is to discuss renewal of our health insurance for employees. And to start this off, we've got about four different options for the coming year. And I'll refer you to this breakdown of the options of different companies. Auditor Jane Downard and Haley Weston has put together, and this is an excellent report. They've put a lot of work into this. And there's a lot of information here. One thing, as everybody knows right now, is that one complicating factor in this, we've recently been informed by Reed Health that they do not want to recognize our insurance company anymore, for some reason or another. They say that they're trying to get away from reference-based...
Pricing? Reference-based pricing?
Reference-based pricing. And that's what our insurance company uses when they settle up with these people. So... Before I get into this too deep, Jane, is there any... Would you like to kind of take the lead on explaining this? Because you've done all this work. I don't expect you to... I don't expect you to crawl too far out on the limb on this today. But if you can explain what all is in this report and what it means for us in this decision, you're free to do so. If you don't want to...
No, I mean, it's kind of simple. We can go with our same insurance we've had for the last eight years, and our employees would no longer be able to go to Reed or Reed-affiliated doctors. Or we could switch to... Now Reed has offered us their own plan. When they told us they didn't want to take our plan, they have a plan that they offered us. But as you can see in one of the handouts that are attached here, Reed's plan limits us to basically only Reed unless you wanted to pay a whole lot more out-of-pocket. They have a tier, network tiers. And Reed is tier one with a certain set of deductibles and out-of-pocket in pretty much any other facility. So Henry County Community Health, Kettering Health, Margaret Mary, TriHealth, Rush County, any other hospital or doctors would be considered out of network, and your out-of-pocket would be unlimited. So if we go with the Reed plan, you would be going to only Reed. So then if we wanted to get away from either one of those kinds of plans and not limit our choices, we could go back to like a fully insured Anthem plan, which is what we had nine years ago before we switched to Apex. Or we could go with... There's a dual-option plan where employees could choose to opt up and pay more for insurance to be able to go to Reed. So everyone else could stay on the RBR plan that we currently have, that we've had for the last eight years. And those employees who want that benefit of being able to go to Reed, it would be similar to how like right now we offer a basic life insurance plan. So all employees automatically covered at $20,000. But if I want to be covered at $100,000, I pay that difference. So one of the pricing options in here is if an employee, you know, let's say Haley has a doctor at Reed that she really loves, and she doesn't want to not be able to go to that particular doctor anymore. Well, she can opt up to a more expensive plan and then pay that difference in premium herself and still be able to go to Reed. And we did have another option. I did not include it in your packet because I didn't think it was even a consideration. The RWDSU union had offered us a plan, but their plan does not allow retirees. So the people that we have that have worked for the county for years and retired from here on the retiree insurance would no longer be able to have insurance through the county. So I just didn't even include that paperwork because I didn't think you would consider a plan that would eliminate the retirees.
I momentarily forgot about that option. And we have made a commitment to our retirees to provide retiree insurance for anyone that retires prior to being eligible for Medicare or Medicaid.
And some of your information, just so if the question comes up, well, how many of our employees are currently using Reed? That's what this handout is that has the yellow highlights. In one of the pages in your packet, I gave the total number of claims for the year. It's page nine. Shows the total number of claims, how many of those claims were Reed or Reed-affiliated doctors, and then how many were other hospitals or doctors, and then what the percentages of that was. So we obviously do have several people that use Reed, but maybe not as much as you would have thought if you look at those numbers. And what the two sets of numbers are, the top set includes... There's a company on this printout with the yellow highlights called RCG Connerville that has 506 claims and over $1 million in billings. That is the dialysis place out here. It's affiliated with Reed, but I don't think... I'm not sure. I used both. I included it in the top section is where the 43% and 63% come. And the bottom section, I did not include that as a Reed claim. And that makes our Reed usage 29.9% in the amount of billing that was Reed 20% of the totals for the year.
So if the numbers from the dialysis center were taken out, then the percentage of Reed would be even less?
Of the total number of claims, yeah. And I didn't get this report until last night, so I didn't have a chance to put a whole lot of... I'm just looking at that total number of claims column and the total billed amount columns. Is all I was looking at. Because this includes like lab work and things. I mean, it includes... Like some of these, I can see our pharmacy charges, but still, it's just a quicken.
That really is a large portion, though. That dialysis, that...
Yes.
That's a large portion of the total billed amount. That 1 million? Yeah, and it's 2.42.
I would add too that since we became aware of this, we have reached out to Reed. I've talked to their VP there and offered to contract with Reed Health on behalf of our employees that do use their facilities. And it was a very negative response that we've got. And you know, they were supposed to get back with us and say a final yes or no, but they are not saying anything right now.
So on that buy-up option, is that... Would that be still with the RBR for the rest of this? And then anyone who wants to buy up would be...
Yes.
Okay.
That was the... on page six.
And then all that would mean is they would be able to go to Reed?
Yes.
Did you guys... Did you figure out? I know it's probably in here. I see your percentage of increase. Is it 35.8%? Is that what that would be? I was thinking for the premium amount, that that increase would be for those people who might opt for that? Do we have an idea of what that would be?
On page... Other page in here. Okay, on page 11, I showed what the difference in premium would be for the PPO and the HSA. So the opt-up plan is the top set of numbers there. And then the regular plan is the bottom set. So the difference, just say for example, to opt up on the PPO plan as an employee only would be an extra $398.94 a month.
So that'd be almost $200 paid period?
Yes. And then like going down in order where I've got the difference, the first column is employee only, the next column is employee spouse, the next column is employee child, last column is family plan. And then the left is the PPO, the right is the HSA, the high deductible plan. On the one... On page 10 was just showing how much our premiums have gone up. I used the family plan for PPO because that's our most expensive plan. You can see in 2017, our premiums for employees were 171.31. That would be per pay. In 2024, it's 231.95 per pay. So that it has only increased a total of $60.64 over the eight-year period. And then the very last page, page 12, that shows the self-insured fund. By making that decision in 2017 to go to a self-insured plan, we have saved now 2.2 million dollars is what we have as a balance in that fund. Since we're paying premiums to ourselves, we get to keep any savings that we have.
And if I understand it right, if we opted for a... A full-benefited Anthem plan, our premiums would go up to the point where that surplus that we now have would be used up in a matter of about four years.
Yes. Yeah, if we went to the Anthem plan, that is the... I'm sorry. The fully insured plan, you're looking at a difference of about $800,000.
And that's an $800,000 annual increase that council certainly hasn't budgeted for. And our only alternative would be to use it out of this health fund surplus, which is a temporary... Be a very temporary arrangement. I don't know how council would figure that out next year's budget hearings. You got any ideas, Tracy?
I think this is one of them decisions that you don't like to make. It's hard. Not everyone's going to be satisfied. It's hard to think we're getting a new facility built in our town and they've kind of closed the door on us. Put us in a corner, I guess. Which seems a little bit like a monopoly. Especially after all the work we did last year to get everything figured out. But when I look at it as, I guess I might be unique in that I have this insurance current, and I also... We all are taxpayers. And I've also been elected to be fiscally responsible. Hard decisions. It would be really hard not to just stay where we are with that money, considering it $800,000 increase in premium and no return. And I don't know. We don't have like a percentage of people, especially if we found out that this dialysis part is not actually Reed Health. That's my biggest concern is those people, I think, thinking about them and that service that they receive. I wouldn't want them to be inconvenienced after driving, you know. That's a lot of claims there on that. I don't know how many people that involves, but it's a high percentage of our claims. So that's why it's hard because it's not good on that side. But I know from having our insurance that it's not a bad insurance plan. That's why I took it, to see what it was. I haven't had any problems with it, so... It's been established as a good insurance plan. And I do believe that keeping our retirement insurance is essential. It would be unfair to change that with people getting close to that place of retirement. So that would be really wrong of us to do that. So we wouldn't be able to consider, you know, an option without it.
I don't know if you saw in the written letter part of this on page two, to keep us, Imagine 360 has incentivized us to stay by offering 63,000 of incentives. So three months, they're offering us three months of free admin costs, and then they would pay $50,000 worth of balance bills would go away. That would take care of all but two of the current claims.
Well, it doesn't seem like there would be as many of our employees would be affected by Reed's policies than I first thought.
It doesn't appear so based on the number of claims we have. If you look, we've got plenty of people going to other places, so... I mean, I think obviously for those who go there, it would be hard to not be able to go there anymore, but...
I know it would be good to make sure people understand too that that doesn't mean they can't use ER. The ER is available to them.
Right, yes.
So...
Yeah, no matter what insurance you have, you can use that emergency.
And that's one of the bad things about this Reed policy and this option that they offer to go with the insurer that they are partnered with, our employees would only have the option to go to Reed Health. They wouldn't be able to go anywhere else.
Yeah, and that's worse.
Affordably. I mean, to be fair, we could go somewhere else, but we just couldn't afford to go anywhere else.
Well, you would be going without any insurance.
Right.
Yeah, especially with it not really being a hospital where you're going to be able to stay. Right? I mean, if you go to a hospital to stay, if you wouldn't... I mean, you'd have to go to Reed, yeah, you'd have to go to Richmond, so, I mean... That really is bad.
Well, Dale, you got this figured out?
Sure.
Okay. And when are we going to need to schedule open enrollment?
Normally it's around the first two weeks of December.
When she comes here, isn't it end of November last year?
I'm thinking that it was the very end of November last year because Angela will come for a day and do open enrollment meetings. And then that normally kicks off the two-week period for open enrollment. But I have to have all of that information sent to them. If I don't have it sent to them by the middle of December, typically they're sending me lots of emails.
Well, it's right around the corner for no matter who.
Yeah.
Yeah, after we need open enrollment.
But we are scheduled, yeah.
On November 28th, last year.
Is the dual-option plan a standalone plan? Or can it be... Can it exist side to side with the standard Imagine 360 plan that we always had?
Yes, it would be... The dual-option plan, everybody who wanted to could stay on the standard plan, the RBR, at the lower cost. And only those employees who choose to opt up would have the Cigna.
And they would have to opt up at their expense to the tune of an increase in premiums? Like over $300 a month?
Yes.
So they would be paying to go to Reed, basically?
Not a very good option for them, but it is an option.
One thing to keep in mind, it's going to cost you an extra $600,000 just to offer that as an option.
An extra $600?
If you look at page four, the dual option, because it makes your stop loss and some of your other insurances go up. So for you to be able to give that as a choice... So for you to be able to give that as a choice, you're going to pay more.
I got a question for you two. What if we kept our policy with Imagine 360 and leave the door open for a negotiated contract with Reed for those, that percentage of employees that do use them? And see if they will come around on that by the end of the year? And if I understand everything right, that's the only way we can accommodate the least amount of impacted employees. There's certainly less employees doing business with Reed than, than they are going to other places.
Yeah.
About the only option we've got.
From a fiscal point, it...
Well, fiscally...
We wouldn't make any sense to change from where we are.
We, we don't have the funding.
That's right.
To go, um...
I hate it. It's a hard decision, but...
Oh yeah, I hate it too.
Well, if we choose to opt up, go with that plan, $600,000 more. If we choose Anthem, $800,000 more. And we would lose then, if we go that route, our, you know, seven years we've gotten that return of premium, which is over $2 million. I mean, that's an average of $323,000 a year. It, I mean, if this is your home, you, you'd sit down with the family and have a hard conversation. And we just can't right now. Unless Reed, maybe this will help Reed to think about or rethink what they're doing because this really looks bad on them, I think, most of all. It's not a good way to do business in your town you're building in.
Well, I think we, I think we all want a, a good relationship with Reed, them being the, the primary healthcare provider in this area. But, you know, no one here was prepared for their recent policy changes. And I would hope that, I would hope that something on their end would change on that. And I, I certainly, I don't see how we could tell our employees, you can only go to Reed for treatment and nowhere else unless you're going to go and pay for it all yourself.
Or if you choose to opt up, you're going to have to pay, uh, you know, almost $200 more dollars pay period.
Yeah, in order for them to provide that option, that's got an added expense to it.
Yeah, it's not good for anybody.
There's no easy answer to this and no single answer that fits all circumstances. Haley, can't you make this any easier?
Unfortunately, no one wants to. Hey, you should do it. You rent for hours and you got four more years of it.
And our, our total number of people on the insurance is roughly 100?
Yes.
And then we determine the percentage is not A that utilized Reed by our claims.
Yeah, right. Currently, we have 104 employees on the insurance.
That doesn't, does that include dependents and staffs?
No, that is just the number of employees.
Okay.
That's not talking covered bodies.
All right. So it's potentially three times that amount, say roughly. Contrary to what some may believe, I'd like for, I would hope that our employees can believe that we are providing the best level of health insurance that we can afford. And that's just the best we can do now.
Well, and as a side thought, her, having the retirement insurance is not something you get offered everywhere you go either. So there is a benefit to having that, I think, for people to look forward to. So you kind of sacrifice on one side, but you're going to gain on the other.
Yeah.
I mean, you kind of got to look at it both sides.
We've made a commitment to our retirees, cover their insurance needs until they become medicare eligible. And we've got people that have retired on that promise. And I think it's important that we keep it.
Yes.
Dale, you guys don't have retiree insurance.
No.
Do you? Well, by the time you're 65, you may not feel like wetting those stretchers.
I'm rocking now.
Haley, you need this today, don't you?
Kind of, very soon. I know we got that email from Bill, that at least some of those numbers on our renewal might change as of the 15th if we don't have our answer.
Two days.
And I have employees asking me every single day, when's open enrollment? What are our rates for next year?
I understand that.
Well, just looking at the homepage, well, this isn't numbers, but second page in, I guess, looking at the cost for us, for our current policy, even insurance, between the $1,846,508 and a maximum of $2,178,428. When you think about those numbers compared to even those amounts of difference that we're talking about, there's, I mean, you just can't do that. Really, like what you said's great. I think we should plan a meeting with Reed and ask them if they would consider some sort of special contract with Faid County, just like they did last year.
Well, they're, they currently, currently honor our insurance policy.
Uh huh.
This, you know, this change is coming on January 1st. So, um, going forward, we really don't know how flexible they're going to be. If, if we, I, I think it would be certainly to their advantage to be a little more accepting of, of a contractual agreement. But if, if they lose patients, you know, if, if we stayed with the insurance we have and they lose patients on the cause of it, I don't, I don't see how they think they would be helping themselves with that policy. Which our research shows that, um, with the, with the insurance company that they are partnering with would pay them less than what we're currently paying them. That don't make no sense to me.
It doesn't.
You know, I'm always writing myself notes.
Yeah.
What's your recommendation?
I don't see how we cannot stay with where we're at. I mean, and I know, I know that's going to make it rough on everybody who, who uses Reed, but, I mean, like Dale said, we didn't budget for any of those higher plans, so that extra either $600 or $800,000 a year would be tough to come up with. You know, the, the Reed plan is a comparable plan, but it's, it's not, it's not a proven plan. It's the, the first year that they're offering it and those numbers, I think, are a little concerning.
And then it knocks out all the other percentage of people who don't use Reed.
Cannot, yeah.
Yeah. So that, and it really could be...
That's, that's the worst part is that, yeah, it, it creates a monopoly. I mean, they're pretty much saying, we don't want to take your insurance. Now we want to sell you our insurance. And while we're at it, our insurance isn't going to cover any of the, or they're going to cover at a much higher expense. They do cover up to a point, but it's just a...
It'll cost you.
Yes, yes. So I just, I think all things considered, I would take, I would renew the existing policy and then take advantage of the incentives that Imagine 360 is offering and maybe in a year we would be really reconsider, well, or sooner than that. I mean, both Dale and I talked to, to a couple of different people at Reed, trying to get them to contract with us. You know, if they don't want to accept what we're currently offering, well, would you You know, if they don't want to accept what we're currently offering, well, would you accept? And pretty much nothing. They, they don't want to negotiate.
The last time I talked to the VP about this, he said he would get with their CFO and see if it was workable. He doubted it, but he would check and see if it'd back with me. And then I never heard anything more again from him on it. And I, I think every, every healthcare facility in the country is probably having post-COVID prob, financial problems because there's a lot. If I understand the right, people's doctoring habits and everything have changed after COVID. They used to go to the doctor all the time, now they don't go as often. They got used to hospitals and doctors' offices being virtually shut down. And things haven't just snapped back. They were, they were the way they were before. Maybe that'll eventually change. I know everybody seems to be in a financial crunch right now, including us.
But also, on the other hand, a lot of reasons why some people aren't going to Reed is because you can't get into a doctor without a wait of about a year, certain specialists. So that, you know, I'm not sure what's going on there. It's hard to understand. That's, that's the truth of the matter. So I've heard that from a lot of people, so I don't know what's going on.
I don't either.
It's hard to understand. Maybe why, I know personally, I have family members who've chosen to go elsewhere based on that right there. Can't wait, you know, nine months to get into a specialist when you find out you have a serious problem.
Now, is that the same, is it, is it the same way other places?
No, because they get right in, other places, yeah. Well, especially if you just go Indianapolis or, you know, we're not that far from, you know, some really nice places and good doctors too. So personally, where I live, out, and probably where Dale is too, it's close to an hour for me to get to Reed Hospital in Richmond. So I'm just as close to go to Indianapolis, pretty close. So I don't know, it depends on where everyone lives too, but, you know, I don't. I'm not saying anything against Reed. I have some, I have a doctor that's through Reed and I'm just saying there are, we're in a good area for good doctors too. We don't have to be dependent on Reed.
Yeah, there, there are options for them, that's for sure.
So have you read everything you need to consider now?
Well, one from I see is like you've got Jennifer and DuBois. There's over 100 claims just with those two. So how many families are we going to tell they can't go see their family doctor? I know that's bad, but. Well, it wouldn't be us, it ain't us telling them that.
Well, yes, yes and no.
Yeah.
But that's, that's, that's the only problem I see. I, I don't think we've got a choice, really.
I don't like this any more than you do. It's really no, no really good option.
We're just kind of stuck in a corner with it when you don't, we don't have the, we don't have the finances really to do this either. Reed's not making it easy.
I think the best we could do probably, if we stay, if we stay with the carrier that we have, inform Reed that we're going to leave the, leave the door open. That we're open for negotiating a contract agreement with them, if that can be done. I don't know, don't know how that would go over with them. That wouldn't say we're trying.
Well, I think our first and foremost responsibility is to, we're all taxpayers here and to be responsible with what we're looking at here. That has to be the first, especially with where we are. We're not, if we were a different county and had a lot of money, it wouldn't be, it'd be easy to choose. But we're not, so we have to be looking ahead and knowing what we've got coming. And we can't, I don't think it's a time to make a big change like this. That could affect the budget and.
It would be interesting to know what's going on in some of the surrounding counties on this. I haven't talked to anyone to try to find out. It could be that we're not the only ones being affected like this.
Well, I know there's another place here in town that's been affected by it, a small place. But I heard about someone who was told their insurance wasn't going to be good at Reed anymore. Same kind of insurance we have. So they were looking for insurance. So, you know. So, it's one of those hard decisions. Like I said, there's not a good one here. But I think the one that I feel most comfortable with personally, I would, I would like to make that motion that we just stay with our insurance, like you said. And see if we can go back to Reed and have a serious discussion. And maybe even before the end of the year, they may reconsider and offer us a contractual agreement. So I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to continue our, or to renew our policy with Imagine 360. And to, if I understand you right, offer the, offer Reed an option to contract with us for our employees and do use them, possible, right? Hold, hold the door open for a possible contract with Reed for affected employees that cover everything you need to have on record. Is there any further question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, three ayes, Jane. Well, with that out of the way, well, first of all, you two got anything else you want to cover today?
I don't.
All right. Well, now I've got a really big decision for you to make. Remember here a while back when we, we gave the, the, the committee that's handling the 250th anniversary next year, gave them permission to plant a tree out here on the ground somewhere? Well, they're kind of beating me up wanting to know when they can plant the tree, because they're ready to plant the tree. We'll tell them where they can put it. Dale.
But what kind of tree are they going to plant?
It's, I guess it's going to be a poplar tree.
Poplar, yeah, that's good.
Because it's a stake tree. Now, I kind of lobbied for a persimmon tree, but they thought I was a little bit too sour. So before you two leave the building today, could we walk around and, and see where you want to allow them to put this tree? Not too close to the building, because if it blows over, it'll knock out a window or something.
Yeah.
You want to do that?
That's good.
Okay. And another thing. We've been kind of tardy about making up our minds about what to do with the opioid settlement, this, this year's distributions. And we've got a recommended, we, if she saw the, the thing from Joelisa again today, I'm okay with, with following those, that rulebook that she's provided if we want to do that.
Yeah. That's good.
Just a reminder, we've got people waiting on us to make a decision about that.
And they'll have to do that, complete that application and then, then we have to do the point system for it and all that. So, yeah, I thought, she said maybe by December we'd make our decision. So that.
So I think the first thing we need to do is either adopt that set of rules or not.
Right. I'm, I say, I make a motion to adopt it. I read it and, and I agree with it.
Can we adopt it here or do we got to wait till a regular meeting?
I think we can do it here. This is a special meeting, but it's not, you know, not something we can't cover, right, Jane?
I think, I think so, yeah. I think the only time you're limited is like executive sessions, when you have advertised that it's this one purpose. We didn't advertise this as anything other than a special session and no agenda that limited us to specific items.
And I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to adopt the scoring criteria for local opioid settlement and distributions. And accept applications or accept, how do I want to say that, Tracy? We, we've already got some applicants or people interested, but we.
They'll have to complete this application, yeah. So we'll have to, they'll have to get it from us somehow.
Well, for recorded purposes, we'll call it, we'll, we'll accept completed application forms as approved today.
And then we'll have that done from now, because we have a lot of years to get on this.
Yeah.
So we've got it.
Okay, does that settle it, everybody's? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. So we'll let Joelisa know that we've adopted this and we can move forward. You got any news yet for a contractor to replace that water line?
I finally had the day term written down. He said he would be interested, but it would be the end of December.
Well, I talked to another contractor just today and asked him to take a look at it. And he said he would get back with me tomorrow. So it sounds like though, it may not be as, as pressing as we thought it was with the email I read this morning about the access panels being delayed. That's going to be sometime in December, sounds like. So I would rather expect the worst and not be disappointed. I can't think of anything else right now.
Handbook. We need to get that done because Jane has to upload that to stable accounts. Haley's went through it all, we've all gotten the email. I know Jeff responded, I saw today that he was good with it.
On what?
Our handbook.
Oh, the handbook?
Yeah, me and you sat four hours.
Yeah. Is there?
Yeah.
Now, the other, if you want to talk about that, I've got a question here. You know, why, I noticed when we took out these, the individual hours, business hours posted for each office in the courthouse. In this set of, in this revision, that section is taken out. What is our rationale for taking that out? If our hours are not officially posted somewhere or in the handbook, where are they posted?
Didn't we put in a handbook first on the door and it would be added to the county website?
Yeah, yeah.
I believe that we did put that in there.
So that's why we, we took it out of the handbook, because like every time you allow an office to change, like what you did with the clerk's office last year, we would need to amend the handbook. So having it in like some offices, other offices, I know prosecutor, a couple of each, they go change their hours. So, so leaving it out of the handbook means we don't have to continue to revise the handbook every time an office changes. So the office, having them posted on their doors, every individual office, and then we have it on our county website.
Okay. I, I'll buy into that. The handbook just seems more permanent, you know.
Well, that was part of the problem. Offices aren't permanent.
Yeah.
So. Which, I mean, like what you did with the clerk's office made sense. They would, they would be, you know, with the courts and everything, but we just don't want to be in a position that every time an office changes, for whatever reason, that we have to change the handbook.
Yeah. You had a chance to go through all of them yet?
Yep.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion for the revised handbook.
Okay, we've got a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the, this year's amendments to the employee handbook that we have and allow the auditor to publish those changes. Good enough? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. And thanks for all the work you two put in on that. That was a lot of.
It was.
That was all, Haley.
That was a lot. Anything else?
Um, well, the Christmas dinner, county Christmas dinner this year, I think, I don't, I'm not sure that we had talked about it.
Not at a meeting? Now, that's tentative for December 18, right?
Yeah, on Wednesday.
And we were going to try to put it on for closing from 12 to 2 again, right?
So we need to.
And Dale Munson doing the cooking?
You want to eat it?
I'm not doing the cooking this year, I'm out of that, you know? My friend Carrie, she just started her business name is the Abundant Table Catering Company. We'll be catering.
Well, it's six weeks away from today.
That's good.
Now, we haven't.
December 18.
I think so, we have it on Wednesday.
Yeah, whatever.
How you doing?
I don't know what that is.
There's a guy here, let's get up a check.
You're just going to have to bring it.
There's a guy here, let's get a check.
Are we, are we not ready to adjourn?
Yeah, getting close.
I'll make the motion that we have a Christmas dinner on December 18 and we close from 12 to 2. Courthouse will be closed from 12 to 2 for dinner.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to allow the courthouse to be closed to the public from 12 noon to 2 PM on December 18 for the purpose of an employee Christmas dinner. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Is there anything else? You're not going to get another chance today.
We made a shorter meeting Tuesday out of this, so.
Let me adjourn.
Second that.
Hey, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes, we adjourn. Three ayes, we'll adjourn.